Order. Somebody please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Before I get into the agenda, if anybody wants to make public comments for the last three minutes, please fill out a form over here. That's other than the applicants, if it's issues at large. Anyway, okay, here we go. Point of notice, publishes. Write it. Minutes, who will the minutes from the meeting? October, October 4th?
I'll vote October.
I was going to ask if there's any corrections.
Oh, corrections, excuse me, no, I, I, it didn't seem so to me, but carry on.
I'm kind of anxious to get through here. No, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? Motion approved second?
Second.
Second, Frank. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, unanimous, all right. All right, anybody? Comments on the agenda, any additions you want to make? Hearing none. All right, this is the time for the meeting when we allow for public comments, as I said, if you would fill out a form, on issues not related to the agenda, on issues not related to the agenda. Are we online as well, do we have a public input online?
We're on the county channel, people can't join us.
Okay. Okay. Do we, we have, do we have any public comments? All right, hearing none, we're going to go right then into the action items. First action item, label number seven on the agenda, is road name change request in the Sheldon area, changing the road name from Wiley Acres to Jonesland Way. The applicant is, I hope I pronounce this right, Kaffia Bell Jones. Fine. Rob?
Okay, well, what we have before us is a road renaming, and if you remember from, I guess, a few meetings ago, that's one of the jobs of the planning commission, is that we get to review when there's a name change on a road, and unlike other things that come before this committee, the decision of county, of the planning commission is final, so you get to make a decision here, it doesn't go further than this commission. This is an existing private road called Wiley Acres, which is located in basically north of the Whale Branch in Sheldon Township off of Stroben Road, intersects with, Stroben Road comes off of Trask Parkway, US 21, just south of US 17 at Gardens Corner. And this was initiated by Kaffia Jones, the partner of the property owner, and that is, we have a statement of justification shows that the applicant, you know, that they have the approval of the property owner. And unlike other road renaming's, this only serves one property owner, so one of the requirements, there's two things that we want to make sure, one is that there's no duplication of names, so we coordinate with E-911 and make sure that we're not introducing a name that is somewhere else in the county that might confuse public safety officials. And then also, we have to make sure that a majority of property owners are in ready for a change as well, and so even if this is one property and being initiated by the property owner, that, that is not an issue here. Other than that, we have a few criteria we look at. The first is road renaming requests after individuals, for any collector, higher order street should be reserved for individuals who contribute or have been notable significance to the citizens of Beaufort County. This is a private, local road, so that does not apply to this. But if this were a, you know, if we were changing the name of Robert Smalls Parkway, we want to make sure that, whatever naming it, if it was another person, I would, I could imagine that there was anyone, you know, who would change that name to. Duplication or near duplication of street names is not permitted, that's something that we've already coordinated with E-911. Use of numbered or lettered, that's not permitted, that's not, you know, applicable here. And then finally, consistent with historical or physiographic features of the local area, that would mean if somebody had Desert Way or something, I don't know, but, you know, we want to make sure that, or if, you know, if it's a history and it's not historically correct to the area, but none of those are really applicable to this project, so our recommendation is to approve the name changes.
Questions of Rob?
I have a question, Rob. You know, driving around the county, there are a lot of roads that were named after property owners. Mostly in the rural areas and stuff. But a question I have, are we allowing, or are we setting a precedent here of renaming the property on the basis of the current tenant rather than the property owner? Where, whereas, are, are we allowing tenant changes as opposed to property owner changes?
I'm the wife of the property owner.
Yeah, I don't think that's a tenant issue.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and I guess, this has been unusual, this is one property with one road. Typically, you have to have the approval of all the, you have a majority of the property owners. So, that, that was built in to kind of make sure that when road names are done, road name changes, that we're carefully considering the people who live on that road. So I think that that, that's one safeguard, I think in the case of this property, because it's one person, you know, it's like, oh, what if every single person wanted to change name their street, but... So I would say that that's a safeguard, but currently, the way the code is written, this is consistent with our code.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions of Rob? All right. Ms. Jones, would you like to address the commission on your request?
Absolutely. Thank you for listening to this, which is very important to our family, the Jones family. My husband, Mr. Lee, acquiesced and decided to allow Jones instead of Lee to be the road name that could be approved, we have eight grandchildren and more on the way, and everybody has Joneses. So we felt that that was an absolutely perfect opportunity for us to build our future with our family by naming the road and developing the legacy for the family. I appreciate you listening to this.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I think yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Any discussion amongst commission members, any questions you have? All right, then can I have a motion to approve the change name request from Wiley Acres to Jonesland Way?
Yes, I move that we approve the street name change from Wiley Acres to Jonesland Way.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second, Frank, second. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next issue. Thank you. All right. The next issue on our agenda, zoning map amendment, rezoning request for 6.26 acres, 186 Cherokee Farms Road, to change from T2 Rural to T4 Neighborhood Center. Before we start, is there a recusal on this?
Sure.
Okay. We have a recusal, so you'll have to leave the room while we're concerned, we'll call you back though.
I wanted to, well, I'll get into a little bit of background.
Okay.
This was originally on our agenda for the September meeting, and at that time, the applicant was proposing to change the zoning to T4 Neighborhood Center. And at that time, staff recommended denial, we were concerned that that was competing with the zoning, the existing business district in the Cherokee Farms Haversham community. And also, at that time, we received a letter from the air station saying that they did not recommend approval and that they needed more information. So the applicant, prior to that effort, coming to the planning commission, withdrew the application at that meeting. Since that time, and I'll go into the background of this, but I wanted to provide some, because this has been deferred several times, since that time, the applicant reached out to Haversham Cherokee Farms to address some of the concerns and to really talk through what the appropriate zoning for this area was, and also what they had in mind for the area. I was in on that meeting, and what they agreed to do at that time was to, rather than request the T4 Neighborhood Center zoning, which is our most intense of the transect zones, the, you know, the commercial or mixed use transect zones, and they went a step down to T4 Hamlet Center Open. One of the big differences between those two districts is the building height. In the T4 Neighborhood Center, it allows four-story buildings, T4 Neighborhood Center, or Hamlet Center Open, it allows two and a half story buildings. There are also limitations on the total square footage of a building, which is capped at 50,000 square feet, where in their original request, there was no limitation to the size of the building. So that, those changes were made, with that, I'll kind of give an overview of what the request is, and then, you know, we can move forward. So, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the, with the Haversham community in northern Beaufort County. It's located off of Cherokee Farms Road, which is off of Joe Frazier Road in the Burton area of northern Beaufort County. This particular property, if you were approaching Haversham, you know, going on Cherokee Farms Road toward Haversham, it would be on your left as you're approaching the community, or, you know, the direction would be to the south of the road. And it's, the property is 6.26 acres. Future land use designation in our comprehensive plan has it designated for urban mixed use, I believe because of its proximity to, to Haversham. And then also, it is, a portion of it is in the air installation compatible use of ACUs, which has restrictions on density and some uses in that area. That's the area that has the noise contours, and in this area, it's the noise contours of the MCAAS Beauforts and the jet, the F-35B jets. The proposal is, at this point, is to change it to T4 Hamlet Center Open, which is shown on this map here. The applicant is, the name of the company is FTV Real Estate Company, but it's Randall R. Michelson, who's here representing the project, and they can fill you in on more details. So, some of the considerations that we looked at for this development is, it sits right next door, oh, and then the other thing that I will mention, I think what I could do now, we have a, this is something that county council has been requesting, but we have drone footage of the property to kind of give you an idea about where this is located. It should, there we go. So this is looking south at the property, and there is an existing about 12,000 square foot of industrial or light industrial building there currently. And that building right now, with the T2 Rural zoning that is on the property, you know, it's restricting some of the things that can be done with that. We're now going, looking through the property, some of it is undeveloped and wooded, but it's about six acres. And if you look at where the land is cleared, that's land that's, I believe, is outside their property, there's some smaller residential lots, and then you can see the Cherokee, or, Haversham, that's the commercial district for Haversham, so it's very close to the entrance of Haversham. This is going the other direction away from Haversham, toward where Cherokee Farms Road intersects with Joe Frazier Road. I guess we got a little, get the zoom along there. Right up there is the intersection of Joe Frazier Road, and then this is just kind of a one final overview of the property. So, it pretty much includes that whole cleared area with, with the light industrial building, and then the forest area between that and the next cleared area. So, that kind of gives you an idea of what's there currently, but it's very close to these existing Haversham community, and then also across this street, Cherokee Farms is sort of, is a future phase of Haversham, and that will build out, and it will be much closer to, to that development. So that is one of the main considerations we looked at, because in total, there's been about 1,400 residential units at 228,000 square feet of commercial development that has all been, already been approved for the Haversham Cherokee Farms community. And currently, I would say there are about half of that as far as what has been developed. So there's still a lot of capacity for future growth, even for commercial in that area. And so our original concern with that original zoning request of T4 Neighborhood Center was that that was going to compete with land that is already approved as, as the main street area of that community. And so that was one of the purposes that we sat down with the, some representatives from the Haversham Land Company to talk about what types of compatible uses could go on this land that would be, complement the existing communities, but not compete with the, with the commercial areas. And so we had the applicant, more for illustrative purposes, and also to show the amount of development that could be on that property, come up with two kind of very conceptual sketches, and those are attached with the staff report. But some of the uses that they talked about are things that may or may not be appropriate for the main street commercial that they have in the existing community, but may be needed in that area. So some of the things they talked about were medical offices, buildings, or possible adaptive reuse of the existing light industrial building into something maybe a beer garden or brewery that needs a lot of land, you know, that may not be appropriate in the main street setting. So that's what these illustrations are meant to provide. So with that, basically, our staff recommendation, you know, we believe that this is certainly a step in the right direction for what was presented at, you know, what would have been presented at the September meeting. Still a little concerned that, you know, that this is a fairly intense zoning district. I would say that the one positive side of that is that T4 Hamlet Center Open is very specific with the type of development that could be done, so it's not going to be strip malls, or, you know, buildings are incompatible with Haversham and Cherokee Farms, so that's, I would say, is a positive of this. You know, so I would say that our recommendation is that this is better than what was submitted. And the other thing is that the air station, which originally said, you know, negative recommendation, they submitted, you know, an email today, which I shared with the chairman, and I think you all have copies of that. Dave Trails is here, he can speak to that if you would like. Do you want to speak to your...
Good question. So, the property that's open across the street from there, that's already been approved for...
Yes, and I think the packet has kind of a composite master plan for Haversham and Cherokee Farms. So yes, that's actually part of the, kind of the backside of an extension of the existing main street in Haversham.
Can you have show that map up, I mean, that gives us an overview of the whole...
This would be with the agenda, I don't know if we could share that.
No?
It looks like it's, it looks like it's further down the way it's on the, on the map, and not directly across.
Well, this is...
See, I'm looking over here.
Attachment being?
Yeah.
That open space right across the way.
Oh, right here?
No.
Yeah, that's not part, this right here, this property is what they're proposing.
Now, are we going to be open to somebody building across the street now, because we...
Over here?
Yeah.
If they come and request a rezoning...
So once we give this rezoning, they could request another rezoning over there? Which was a wide, which was a wide open space, really. Just wanted to clarify that.
Ken?
Yeah, Rob, so it's T2 now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just examples, give me some examples of what he could do in a T2.
T2 Rural is fairly limited, it's pretty much a residential and agricultural district. It allows some non-residential uses like ag support businesses. Also, that non-conforming building that's there, we, you know, there's some leeway with grandfathering, if a new use is, is requested for that building, and it's of equal or less intensity of what was there historically, or what was there, what it's replacing, then a new business could occur there. But that is a great limitation to, you know, to, to the use of that existing building.
Oh, okay, because that's pre-existing, non-conforming?
Yeah, and I think another thing, and I should have pointed out when we were looking at the aerial, Haversham Cherokee Farms is kind of a unique area, that you have a very intense community of about, you know, 1,400 approved single-family dwell, or residential dwelling units, that is surrounded by more kind of rural residential area, and so it creates a lot of, you know, conundrums when you're looking at appropriate zoning in the area, because it's, the way it's positioned, and, you know, are you trying to be compatible with the approved development, or do you look at the other development that's occurring outside of the community?
So, you said some residential uses, what, what could they get there? Two houses, three houses, four houses?
On this, it would be two houses.
Two houses.
Another important...
And you'd have to take the building down to get to two houses.
Yeah, I'd have to look at...
Yeah, okay.
Another important thing to keep in mind is that this is in the airport, the MCAAS Airport Overlay District, or, you know, governed by the ACUs, that study that determines where the noise contours are, which would limit anything regardless of what we present this to, and I should have mentioned this in the presentation, to no greater than two dwelling units per acre. So, they could not, with this, whatever they build here, could not have any intense residential development. It would primarily be commercial, maybe a few residential units attached to it. And so, one of the things, if you look at the air station's review of this development, the, one of the things thrown out as a possibility was assisted living, but that density would be greatly limited by that Airport Overlay District.
Well, to that question, if this is approved, and I know these are just concepts, these buildings may be the buildings they put there, they may not be. If it's approved, would the, would the military have some input to that that could negate what they put in there? Or is it now in the county's hands?
I believe some types of developments you have a say in.
So, I'm Dave Trail, I work at the air station. Essentially, if, if something like this were approved, we would ask that it be approved with caveats, so that we would be able to have some sort of say if, you know, when they start developing. Because what I was able to review was those two concepts that they provided that are in the agenda. And I went through, and, and one of them, the one with the beer garden, that's, you know, that's okay with us, there's some caveats in there that I put into that email. But the one with the assisted living facility, we would formally object to a development with that assisted living facility in there.
Not that I'm challenging you, but why, like, what would be your reason for not wanting up this?
It's the population density in the assisted living facility itself, the noise level that you would have in there, that is essentially the reason. It's all based off of the 2013 area, or air installation compatible use zone study, which I can provide, I didn't bring a copy with me today, but I can provide a copy of that. And it just, it kind of goes through and says, it gives us a line by line of types of buildings in different areas of the contours, the noise contours, and tells us what we should be saying yes on and what we should say no.
Again, just to educate me, why is the noise an issue?
The noise is an issue because, first of all, it's a safety issue for people's hearing, but it also becomes an issue for the air station because the more people start complaining about the noise...
Oh, you're talking about the noise of the planes, the...
Right.
With the residents, crickets.
The residents, as loud as they want, yeah.
You don't have to worry about that, it's just...
They're seniors.
I shouldn't say that.
Can you tell it didn't include Haversham in the...
Oh, so in other words, you don't want to create a situation where, yeah, you can go ahead and do all that, next thing you know, you've got 200 people banging on your door complaining about the noise.
Calling their senators, calling their congressmen, and trying to essentially shut us down or limit our ability to trade in the ways that we want to trade. We're very lucky here in Beaufort County, that we've had such a great relationship with, with the council. We have really good air access here, it's really second to none on the East Coast. So we've made a really good job partnering and protecting the airspace here.
Yeah, and, you know, those things are spelled out, we have an overlay district for the, you know, the, the MCAAS overlay that corresponds with that ACUs study with the noise contours. And those types of things, limitations on, like, uses that draw a lot of people together, and limitations on density and noise attenuation of buildings are all part of that overlay district. So it's not arbitrary, it's just important that whoever is, you know, rezoning, would know that there's still additional limitations of what they could do with their property.
Okay, if you don't mind, right. So, taking that into consideration, wouldn't a veterinary clinic be a problem?
The veterinary, so, the veterinary clinic has a different clientele than the assisted living facility. We're not as concerned about the animals that would be at a veterinary clinic.
Oh, you might not be concerned about it, but... Oh, you might not be concerned about them, but the people who have to live over here and listen to those barking dogs every time a plane goes by, they might.
Sure, okay, yeah, and that's, but that's not going to be an air station consideration, that's...
But it is a consideration for...
For you all, sorry, I thought we were, when we talk noise, the ears are pretty good.
All right. Any other questions for Rob?
Rob, a technical question. Does the applicant have any relationship with the company, the Haversham LLC? I mean, I seen in your notes that they have met with one another, but are there, I don't know, maybe you can't tell me this, negotiations that Haversham wants to buy this property?
I can't speak to that, but the applicant's here, so when they present, you can...
Oh, great, thank you.
All right, well, I think then we're ready to hear from the applicant. Who would? Is this Mr. McCall's?
Michaels?
Is it Michaels or McCall's?
I'm Michael. I'm Josh Tiller, and Jennifer Keenan, and Randy Michaels, they're the property owners, and I'm the land planner.
Okay.
Project I submitted the application. And Rob did a good job kind of getting everybody up to speed, but we have, since we initially came forward with the T4 Neighborhood Center, we backed off from that zoning with staff's recommendation, and after a meeting with the developers at Haversham and Rob back in September, we went through a lot of different scenarios with a lot of different zoning options, and kind of landed on that Hamlet Center, and we feel that would be most compatible, not only for what Mr. Michaels wants for his property, but also for Haversham, and the transition from property across the street to this property, and also east and west along the road there.
Okay.
So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did you have a question, Cecily, regarding...
Do you have any sense of what, I don't know that they're representatives from Haversham, and if you're allowed to tell us, what's their point of view?
Well, they were in favor with what we did recently.
I mean, of the current, of the, of the two and a half stories, I mean, they would like a lesser density there at Cherokee Farms, right?
No, they felt comfortable with this, and we all kind of agreed on this, this zone. And the two and a half stories, and it's more of a rural character, the larger buildings will be more of an agricultural, industrial style building, and Mr. Michaels is happy to meet or exceed the architectural standards that Haversham currently has at their development.
So, just to make sure I get all of this exactly correct, what you know, Haversham is happy with the T4 HCO, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That is, it's sort of a downzoning from your last application. And how were they on the last application? They would go, did they like that also, or are they much preferring what you're doing now? I guess I'm trying to figure out what their long-term plan is and your long-term plan, and maybe that is, you know, confidential business information, I don't know, but it does feed into our planning commission, like, what it's going to look like in 10 years.
Yeah.
Josh, I can speak to that.
Yeah, sure.
I don't mean to kick you off some podium, carry on.
I don't want to misspeak.
Thank you, gentlemen, it's too far away from me, that's for sure. I'm Randy Michaels.
Hi.
I need to correct one thing up there, it says on the application, FTB, it's not up there now, but FTB is owned by myself, Randall Michaels. I need to make sure everybody knows my wife is an equal partner, and I'll have a son tonight, so she's an active partner of the company with that. The original zoning request, speaking of generalities...
Back in September, maybe a while ago.
Correct. We had not met with Bob Turner or Patrick Kelly of the Haversham group. Meeting with Robert Merchant, talking with him, it was really his idea to meet with Haversham, because really, you've got trees and then you add Haversham. And we met with them, and it actually turned out to be a very, very good meeting. Did not sure how it would go going in, you know, the whole thing about competition, we're going to do something, you know, that's all really the truly legitimate concern. There is no relationship, by the way, you asked that question, there is no conversation in them buying them, they own a tremendous amount of land. My wife and I are smaller investors, we typically buy derelict properties and rejuvenate them or develop them. We have developed properties in the city, we've done some properties in the county, environmentally damaged properties we've worked with, et cetera. So we're not big-term investors, it's her and I, and we do what we can do together for the community and for ourselves. The, in meeting with Bob Turner and Patrick Kelly, what we quickly realized was that there was a very good fit because of the fact that they have a very tight range of what they want in Haversham. And as far as any development, they want houses, and they want very boutique, you know, they want woodworking. Well, I own Green Line Industries across from the air station on Truss Parkway, that's woodworking, that's not what they want there. They want, you know, an artisan or craftsman, et cetera, a small shop where people come in and see him doing his trade with them. And they don't want dog veterinary daycare, veterinarian clinic, but if it was off-site and could support their community, that would be good for not only the existing homeowners in Haversham, but also really good for them to sell more properties and continue on with the development. Where the property is that we have directly across the road from them, I'm going to say on the north side, is where they want to do Phase 2, or their main project. And they want hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of homes, and there are hundreds and hundreds of families in there. So if they can have support and infrastructure that doesn't necessarily fit their main street, but somebody can get to in a golf cart, you know, all the people in Haversham, I'm sure they have at least one dog per home on average, if not two or three, or cats included, if they can drop them off 600 yards from their entrance to Haversham and on their way to the airport, great. One of the things we looked at, in kind of brainstorming, this was when Robert was part of the meeting with Patrick and Bob, Josh was with us, and also our engineer, Caroline Engineering Company was there, we really just started to get on a roll, and two things, two paths came out. One was the main one of some type of assisted living, how much and how intense, don't know too early at this point in time. And the other one was actually to repurpose the existing building. When we bought it a year ago, prior to this, we met with Eric Greenway at the time before we purchased it, and his feeling was, listen, clean it up, make it look good for what it is now, and then come back and see us, and we'll do what the zoning should be for it. And it's been a year and a half, et cetera. We have cleaned it up, and we keep it, you know, pretty decent considering what it is, but if we can repurpose that beer gardens, I'm not really sure if I understand the pickleball and the pickleball craze and that was batted around as an idea, et cetera, but something that we can develop the property that will support Haversham. We have already discussed with Patrick, mainly Patrick Kelly, but Bob liked this as well, that we would work with their architectural review board to build buildings that mirror and complement the Haversham development. And Patrick, which is involved in that, actually had brought in his main planner, builder, designer architect, Eric Munson. Okay, to talk about the types of buildings that would look like that but still fit more of a little bit industrial part. So the idea of working with them wasn't anything that we saw in the beginning, but actually looks like the key to the success of this project.
So, if I may, Ed?
If so, please.
So one thing that, in our previous, you know, presentations and understandings of this project, was that the staff recommended denial because there is that capacity for commercial development existing in Haversham. What I'm hearing from you tonight is that you would provide commercial that they kind of, doesn't really fit with their image, like veterinary services, or possibly a beer garden, or possibly senior services, you know, but it was all, it would all be there within a golf cart's ride away. Am I hearing you properly?
That's correct, yeah.
So that's, we've never heard that before, so that's new.
It actually worked out really well with Bob and Patrick. They, I mean, it really started to pick up steam in the conversation, we had conversations afterwards, we documented everything, they confirmed it back that they are fully supportive of this. And it's really advantageous for us, you know, they have 400 and some acres, and I may be off on that, and we're talking six acres, so there's only so much impact, we worked well with them, there's only so much impact we can do. But the idea of having support to support their development, but not the type of businesses they want on their main street, that is the key.
And is there a letter of support from Haversham forthcoming?
There's an email, email of support by both Patrick and Bob Turner.
And that is where in the process? I mean, I didn't get it, is it, has it occurred? Is that letter, has that letter happened? Is that letter forthcoming?
No, no, we've had it since the day after the meeting, everybody...
Am I, Rob, am I missing that in my packet? Did I not get that?
It's in the packet.
So Haversham, the Haversham LLC, whatever, development company, supports your proposal?
I just want to be clear on that. Bob Turner and Patrick Kelly, the, either the owners or developers, the main two people there, fully support this because they can see themselves selling more properties, more homes because of the infrastructure. As far as the guy that lives on so-and-so road, house number so-and-so in Haversham, no idea if he supports it or not.
You didn't approach the homeowners association or anything like that? These are just basically the developers of that property?
Either, I'm going to say the owner of the property.
Okay, the owner.
The owner of the Haversham LLC.
The current declarating.
And other adjacent property owners, individuals on Cherokee Farms Road, we don't have a notion of their point of view?
Well, the closest we have is a road called Frank, Franklin?
I think it's Franklin.
Right, it's Franklin. It's the dirt road.
And that evidently is a road, we've been warned multiple times that that's a gang road, and we're to never drive down that road, so...
I'm sorry, a gang road?
Gang, G and G, that's a violent road there, where it's drive-by shootings, people drove in as a cul-de-sac, and shot at all the local homes that came out, it's nothing we want to be involved in. So no, we did not approach that. And then there is nothing else, there's nothing else around us, because all to the north is all Haversham, and to the south, there's that road which is still in between us and Haversham.
Sure, so I don't want to interrupt this, but Rob, given what I'm hearing is new information, does staff have a different point of view or an additional point of view? Or you, from what I got in the packet, your recommendation is denial?
Well, my recommendation was not denial in the packet. The, one thing to keep in mind is that we notified everyone within 500 feet of the property, so we send out mailings to people, and also the property's been posted, so...
There's a new email, Cecily.
Anyone driving into that, you need to see...
It doesn't say this.
I do recall several meetings ago, there was a lady in the audience who was from there who wanted to speak to it, but it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
But I don't recall anybody else coming forward.
For whoever can answer it, is Haversham a gated community? It's not. Is it plans to make it a gated community?
I have no idea.
The reason why I ask is that you drive into Haversham via Cherokee Farms Road, if you want to go in there to get something eaten or something like that, that's how you go in there. So if they're going to build that northern piece of it, I happen to be looking at an aerial map here, so they're just really going to almost then be extending further out the entranceway to Haversham.
On the north side, yeah.
On the north side, right. But you will be on the left side.
On the south side, yeah.
On the south side.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And the only property in between this is that one road, I believe it's Franklin, but it could be.
The only reason why I brought it up is if, and this is something that the owner would have objected to, is if he had ever planned to make that a gated community and put, you know, put a, you know, gate up there.
Yeah, they can't gate a public road.
Okay, oh, okay, I see what you're saying, you have to put it someplace else, yeah, inside, okay. But he didn't, he said he didn't object to this.
Who?
The declarant at Haversham.
Yeah, they were in favor.
Okay.
At their favor because it's, even though the economy's good and they're selling properties now, they're looking at expanding and starting on Phase 2. They explained to us that they're basically sold out now on Phase 1, so looking at Phase 2, you know, this would be a great thing, and it would be something that they can use in the promotion. One of the things they said was, the people there are a little bit elderly in Haversham, and they may have elderly parents that need to come down and need some type of medical care, whether it's assisted living, or if it's just regular medical visits, so having that type of infrastructure would be great. And so it was just kind of, again, really picked up speed as we talked.
So do we have business owners lined up to do these different projects here, or is this just a conceptual?
We have no business owners lined up. No, we really needed to find a fit. As I said, where Jennifer and I are small, and what we do, and we just, if we can find the fit that the community needs, we did that on the other projects we've done in the city so far, then business is gone.
Okay, further questions?
Yeah, I just, if the military adds caveats, is this going to change what we voted on?
Well, we can add to our motion, the caveat that this is consistent, or that the review and final approval of what the concept has input and is agreed to by the military. In other words, they have a voice, they have a voice in the final approval process.
So it will come, it will come back to us when the caveat...
Well, you know, to follow your point, my thought was to include the Haversham Land Company in it too, because they've got a concept in mind that could change.
Sure.
And so, it's almost like three direct partners in here. You know, the Michaels, the Haversham Company, and the military. And it needs to be consistent with all their understanding as to what's going to go on there. The way it's been positioned, to me, is as a servicing organization for the Haversham community, occupying about six acres outside of the current gate. I think that's, you know, an admirable agreement, but it could change. Once this is approved in the final process, that the whole development plan will have to go through the planning department and all the review processes and so on, because I see potentially additional traffic.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there are, there are solitary rural-type homes behind your property, back off that side of the road. And so, you know, all of that will be, to be looked at. But I think it's important that the partnerships between the military and the Michaels and the Haversham Land Company be preserved. Seems to make sense, would you agree?
Absolutely, as far as the military goes, though, I guess that was submitted today, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I haven't seen any of that, but the intent of us, the three-way partnership, as you said, took what I just said for 10 minutes and summed it up in one statement. Fully agree.
All right, well, thank you. All right, are there any other, any questions? All right. All right, well, I guess we're at the point of any discussion further amongst ourselves? If not, do we have a motion and...
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one last question.
Sure.
If this change were approved, would that existing building become conforming?
It depends what it's used for. You know, there are listed uses in that new district, and it would certainly open up more opportunity to adaptively reuse the building.
Because if I'm going to approve a zoning change where there's already a pre-existing non-conforming, then I would want to see the condition that whatever the future use... non-conforming, then I would want to see the condition that whatever the future use of that building is, becomes conforming so that we get rid of the pre-existing non-conforming.
Well, it would have to be because.
We would commit to that. We would.
That's great.
I mean, it's in your benefit.
We would follow.
Just to get rid of pre-existing non-conforming.
You're kicking me off.
I wanted to clarify something. We really don't have the ability to attach conditions.
Exactly.
And so, and I will say that we have, you know, we'll, when we, that zoning district that they're adopting will give a lot more leeway to what that building could be used for. And so our job is, you know, in reviewing development plans, is to make sure whatever they're proposing there is consistent with the zoning ordinance. The issue of limitations on residential density, those things are already codified in the airport overlay district. You know, there's, we could not permit a assisted living that had more than 12 beds, you know, if it's, you know, the, the density is capped to two units per acre. So those are, those types of things are not necessarily additional conditions, those are already built into the restrictions that we have in place because of the ACUs.
Help me understand here. This is two concepts. There could be a third, or fourth, or fifth concept. Will those be, and is it appropriate for us conditionally say they need to be reviewed with the military and the Havercham Land Company? And if you, I don't know, you call that a condition, or just, you know, how would you exclude them, I mean, from consideration?
Well, I think that, I mean, just the public process of development review will bring in those parties, but we can't necessarily add a condition that they have to reach out to Havercham when they're proposing some use, if it is something that is allowed in that district already and meeting all the other requirements. We just don't, you know, we don't have the ability to attach those conditions. I think it would be good policy on their part, you know, being a good neighbor.
That's perplexing, you know?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we just, you know, we're really limited in what you can, what conditions you can attach. Unless you have a PUD, or you have land large enough that you want to enter into a development agreement, there's, there's not a whole lot, you know. But I would say that we're in a good position because we have the airport overlay district based on the ACU study, you know, that, that already has restrictions that will, you know, hopefully prevent encroachment or incompatible uses for the air station.
Did you, I saw your hand raised. Did you want to come back and say something?
Yeah, just real quick. One thing, just, just the zoning itself, it's, it's a form-based code, much like Havercham, even though Havercham's a PUD, it's kind of based on a form-based code. And you basically just have to trust the zoning and the zoning district. It's, it's going to require us to build to a certain frontage along Cherokee. And the zoning more or less is in keeping with what Havercham wants. So from a building placement standard and road alignment and parking standard, it's going to be what they, they agree to. To add to the Marine Corps Air Station, we'll have to comply with those ACUs and requirements as well.
Yeah, that would apply, if they sold the property tomorrow, the new owners can have to, you know, contend with that zoning ordinance. And so, you know, I could see a scenario of maybe a new buyer says, I want to build nothing but self, self-storage units, basically seem to be popular everywhere. That district is not going to allow that to be up on the road, but we'll have to restrict it to the rear of the property and have front development. You know, so there are things like that written into that district that will prevent, you know, an incompatible development of the gateway to that community. So that, you know.
Okay.
The safeguards that we want to attach, we kind of have to trust the proposed zoning and the overlay district, and the people who enforce them or administer them.
I trust our community development director.
Those were all the.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Sir?
Yes, and I would just have to say, from the air station point of view, without the ability to do those caveats, the air station would object to the rezoning until we come up with whatever the planned development actually is, what it is they actually want to do there. And we would have the opportunity to review it, so we have the opportunity to make a good objection or, you know, withdraw our objection at a, at a meeting like this.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
I mean, some of those conditions were building, like noise attenuation.
And those are built into the code, the 25, I can't think of the acronym right now, but E25. No, it's, yeah, you don't.
Day nine.
So some of those are built into the code, the Beaver County code. But just the, the way that it's going to develop and what they choose to do, so from my understanding right now, looking at the ACUs, any sort of assisted living facility would be, for us, an objectionable item. So, I mean, we took a look at both of those, those plans that you submitted, and the one with the beer garden, there was, as long as you followed the codes and didn't deviate from that plan, then we were, we were fine with that one. But the one with the assisted living facility, we have to object to that one based on our regulations. So unless we can here today say, hey, we're going with Plan.
It's a bit of a catch-22, because we can't.
Can I, can I ask something? There's, I guess, got a note that says we should be speaking at the podium for the public. They can't hear.
I think it's a bit of a catch-22. We are fully willing to commit to having the approval of Havercham and working with them and with the air station as well. If that's something in your system that doesn't, isn't allowed, short of giving you my commitment verbally, I don't know what I can do, but we would certainly do that as well. The beer garden concept certainly is the number one concept for that because of the fact of demand and the potential ability to develop and sell that property, sell that building off. And then the other thing is actually repurposing that building. We would really like to repurpose rather than to destroy or demolish as well on that. So we, our intent is, and if you can have a way of structuring it, then we're obligated in writing to work with Havercham and with the air station. We're supportive of that, sir.
Thank you.
When we say beer garden, do we talk about like a craft brewery?
Yes. Yes, that, that's a little so, and that's what we have, you know, Bob Turner and Patrick Kelly, the thought of people being able to go over to something like that with a craft brewery and the whole family atmosphere of that existing breweries, but, you know, they really felt that would help them.
That's, Rob, that's one of those acceptable uses that that building could be converted into? And we're just talking hypothetical here?
Yeah, and I'll say certain uses, if it were assisted living, if somebody approaches and said they wanted to build assisted living, you know, from reading the ACUs, the airport overlay, I would be inclined to say that's not permitted, especially if it was, you know, like a 100-bed facility, and we would most likely coordinate with the air station anyway. There's other kinds of uses, you know, that I don't really necessarily would trigger that type of, you know, coordination. But the types of incompatible uses that I think that they're worried about are things that we would, it would trigger us to consult with the air station anyway. And some are non-starters. If they wanted to build multifamily, that would already exceed the density that's limited in the airport overlay.
Okay. All right. Okay, Mr. Trail, you were sitting down, and I know that your position was, was viewed by the public. Do you want to restate that, or?
Yes, sir. So the, the air station position is that without the ability to do the caveats, we object until we can understand fully exactly how the property is going to develop. One thing that we could do to mitigate this situation without being able to do the caveats is we can enter into a memorandum of agreement with them prior to coming to a zoning board meeting like this, and we can come to an agreement on what, you know, that they would have to come to us and we would review what their plans were, and we could object, and we could work with them within what our needs are as, as an air station. And we'd be perfectly willing to do that and happy to do that. It's actually preferable, I think.
We don't have the right to request that in our motion, but they can certainly, they can certainly do that.
If that's something that they're willing to work through, and maybe we can facilitate it and figure out what things might trigger.
Okay.
One suggestion.
What about Mr. Taylor?
Since Rob's the planning director, you know, when things get serious and we get further down the road with development, we have to go to SOT, maybe the Marine Corps Air Station has a seat at the table at the SOT. So you're part of that.
Certainly. I think it's agreeable, all parties. All right.
Depends whether you want to come every meeting that has, how many meetings we talk about. They meet every week, but it's not always things that are.
It wouldn't make you do that. It wouldn't make you do that. All right. Are we ready to set a motion in order place here?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Would you please state the full motion, so we'll know?
I got to go back to. I make a motion to approve zoning amendment request for T, for 6.26 acres at 186 Cherokee Farms, from T2 rural to T2 neighborhood, the new.
T4 neighborhood center.
Yeah.
Hamlet Center.
Hamlet.
Hamlet Center.
All right. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay. Motion's defeated. All right. That's the end of that particular issue for us. All right. Somebody, Chris, would you ask Armin to come back in, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving parts. It had too many moving parts.
That's what's created that. All right. We're at the last part of the meeting here, of the planning commission meeting schedule. Have you all seen that? It's in your agenda packet. Does anybody have any issues with any of those dates? I review them myself, and they all look appropriate. The Thursday meetings are because of holidays, in the case of July and September.
Ed, the only thing I thought is, are we kind of making an effort to do some South of the Broad?
Well.
So none of these are South of the Broad?
Well, they, there's a footnote at the bottom.
Oh, sorry?
There's an, there's an event.
Oh, if there's a, if agenda items are unique to areas.
Right.
And I think we'll.
Is that okay with you? I mean, can we be flexible on that?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
I mean, there may be an agenda item with all of a sudden, you know, 200 people like are turning out South of the Broad, then I think we ought to be flexible enough to say.
We've done that several times.
Right. I know we've done it, but we're being asked to vote on this. I just want to make sure that there's some flexibility built into it.
There is.
Yeah, that's what it says.
All right. So, okay with everybody? All right. Good. That was easy. I just formally, for the public, want to welcome our newest head of the commission, he's on the wall, who is just joining us for the first time tonight, actually had the ACUs himself in the issue, one of the issues, but he'll be here in all his glory next month with us, and welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Any other topics for discussion? Anybody? No? Nothing more, no more business? I declare this meeting adjourned.